I have a suggestion. So, um, i- in schoology, is it possible to put in a notification when a child checks out a book? Cause there's a button for media specialist and there's all different kinds of different. Um, is it possible to put in there that boom, my son or daughter checked out this book? And there it is, it's sitting right there. So if a parent wants to, they can just go look.
Yeah.
Oh, this is, these are the six books my kid has checked out, you know? Um, another idea is, is it possible, we could probably put this policy with this form for reconsideration right in that media center file on each of the different schoology. Or me, you know, like a high school kid or, you know, there's different schoology sites for each kid or whatever. So.
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's plausible to, um, similar to what we do with our lunch meal system. You can see what your kids have ordered and eaten for lunch. Um, you know, that we can explore. This is, this, this is some of the technologies I'm saying that we'll need to explore for tighter controls internally that we can explore. Um, so that you can see, yeah, Michael's got these five books and here they are. What's this book?
Well, I think you can engage with them too then. Hey buddy, how's this book?
Sure.
What's going on with this book?
It might help with late returns too.
Knowing, uh, you've got some books that you need to return.
All the checkouts are electronic now, right?
Yeah, that's right.
Yes.
Yeah.
Housed in our Alexandria system.
Yeah.
Um, so I'm not sure that, so would you be talking to Alexandria or not or what that looks like? So.
Okay.
Yep.
Yeah.
Well, we would be able to send an alert from one just to say your book is late.
Yep.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
I don't think we're getting that now, but.
We'll explore it.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. Are we on to?
Can I just ask a question because again, I'm kind of a stickler for how policies versus procedures are written? So, um, a couple of things here, like the process for selection and de-selection. Again, putting in the guidelines for those, but then specifying that our policy says we will have procedure for the process for selection and de-selection. Instead of trying to again cross those boundaries here. And then again, the whole, and I'm not saying we shouldn't review it at all. I'm just saying the consideration for challenged resources also crosses the line between procedure and policy in some of the statements and the way it's actually done. That, you know, the, the each challenger is redirected here and then the next step and the next step and the next step. I- in order to not conflate the two, could we separate that out into a detailed procedure? And those, uh, appendices or, um, you know, attachments, that sort of thing? And leave this with the guiding principles and policy under which we've gotta make sure the procedure is actually applied by?
You know, we were going down that path. Because the MSBA policy that I referenced earlier in this conversation was in that. I think when we consulted with other districts, we chose to go a different path. And I think part of the rationale behind that is because of the, um, the attention that this topic.
Right.
Has out there. And so what I would say is where we landed is we wanna be transparent. And therefore included it in the policy. Knowing that that's where people would go.
And, and honestly, if I may, um, this is not a shot against administration, but policy holds teeth according to a community. Regulation doesn't, right? So, um, again, I'm not saying that we're not gonna adhere to policy, but the, the average community member, parent, citizen, looks to policy as like the governing authority. So in this particular sensitive topic, is it more appropriate? Not that every, you know, what's the next sensitive topic, you know, that, so I hear your point.
Yeah.
By chair, I hear you. Um, but this one is not gonna go away anytime soon. And I think is just a, a, a national conversation that I think just needs tighter governance.
I, I agree with all that. My concern is, is when you start to conflate the two, you actually cut away from both of them. So there's nothing wrong with making the procedure incredibly transparent, but by trying to put those two together and not write a book here. We actually create less transparency on the procedure and conflate the policy with the procedure. And that's actually why we usually separate. You have a policy saying we're gonna do all this and oh, by the way, here's the procedure.
And let me, let me, let me ask this. Do we, cause again, former district of mine, we had policy, so we, in the policy section, to your point, we would have six oh six. But then indented below, we'd have six oh six R, which is our regulation for that policy. It's still under policies, but it's a separate document. Do we, with our policies, do we have that subordinated so then we can do the same?
That's kinda what.
So we'll do the same.
Some.
Yeah.
Some. Without all policies.
Okay, so those that have a tight regulation such as this, then I think it's a, I think we can meet that. Cause I think people seeing, they will, they would have to see that regulation under the policy section. So they're gonna put two and two together, this is all part of the policy.
Right.
But legally they are separated and to your point, I think we'd have autonomy as administration in regulation versus policy.
That is true, but I think the biggest point is your statement on transparency. Because when we try to make this concise, we're gonna miss steps in the procedure that.
Sure.
Parents' community wanna know.
Right.
And I think we're gonna allow ourselves more transparency that way.
Got it.
Um, because there's, I mean, especially as we go through this committee and things start to get reviewed and it becomes very prescriptive in there. Uh, and with the definitions being very prescriptive, we're gonna end up with this thing being a book.
Yeah.
And that's, and it's gonna be confusing.
Yeah.
Um, that's just where I, I don't know how everyone else feels and I, I appreciate.
No, I, I hear you. I think we can subordinate this as a, as a, as a regulation under the policy section. So I, I, we, we will break that out, um, for our first pass with you all. Um, keeping the policy more succinct and then having a stronger, more robust regulation. Okay, we can do that.
I, I would also add that the committee here, sorry, didn't mean to interrupt you. Um, the committee here, there's gonna be a charter for that committee to, in general, the subcommittee? Or is this an ad hoc committee?
No, this is.
We talked about, yeah, we talked about that.
This is an ad hoc.
That it's more of a internal committee.
Yeah, it's an internal.
Internal ad hoc.
Yeah.
Yep.
I actually have some questions about that committee, Enrique, I'm sorry.
Sorry Enrique, we talked over you.
That's right. I'm curious about that topic too.
Okay.
So, uh, yeah, segregating the procedures and the actual, that's involved of how to actually institute this policy. Separating that out definitely makes sense. Cause if you just leave it enveloped into the same policy, if we discover that there's an unintended consequence or something that was missed within the procedure, definitely the entire policy.
Mm-hmm.
Or wait until the end of three years.
Good catch.
Um, committee, um, is it okay to go there? Everybody, are we at that point?
Yep.
Kind of, that page?
Take us there.
I'll take us there. The committee, so do the committee members, the, the actual, the specific people, not the, not the titles that we outline here, but the specific folks on these committees, do they change per form filled out?
That would be, that would be the intention.
Okay, so it's not the same people every time?
Yep.
There are different people?
That would be the intention. I would, uh, think that the, uh, school board member potentially would remain the same. The district administrators potentially would remain the same. The principal would certainly change based upon where the, uh, request is coming from. As potentially would be the teachers. Uh, parent guardians, one thought I have on that is because it states that they will come from the teaching and learning advisory. We currently have five to seven parents on that. That would seem to be a designation of who's willing to serve should this committee become necessary to be formed, again, on an ad hoc basis. Because those are people who served that committee throughout the school year. So we would say, you know, that I would envision potentially at the October meeting for that committee, saying, well, we have this potential for an ad hoc committee. Would you be willing to serve in that capacity? So that would be, they would probably remain consistent for, for a year.
Okay, so like we, if we get five forms filled out versus one versus none versus ten, it's this, I, I just. Do we need to be more specific here and outline that or is that just me? Or at least the fact that, you know, almost like, I'm limited, it's too strong of a word, but you know what I mean?
Yeah.
And maybe none, but it was a thought I had, like how often do these folks change?
And is the, is your, is the question maybe that it's, it's beneficial to have them change?
Well, wouldn't it tie back to the teaching and learning committee? Cause that, that committee, there is a cycle, just like the other committees of when those people cycle in and out, correct?
So like if they change, like to your point and to yours, if it changed, if it's different every school year, say.
Yep.
Do we, do we wanna say that in here? Just, you know, the, the, this ad hoc committee will be formed and members will change every school year or something like that? I don't know, just a thought.
Yeah.
And then is it?
And I think that's a good clarification of the ad hoc, that people know what an ad hoc committee is.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So.
But even if we could find it under definitions, I mean, I don't know.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're, we're talking about roles are consistent, people are subject to change.
Right, I guess that's what I'm trying to say.
Yep.
Um, and is it a majority rule kind of situation?
Yeah, that's actually what the procedures that, uh, uh, how to carry out.
Sorry, am I getting more into procedure again? Sorry, right?
Yeah, it's a, it's a fairly, um.
And that's why I do this.
It's a fairly detailed, it's a fairly detailed, uh, multiple page procedure. And yes, the expectation is that, um, there would be a vote.
One more, cause we're on this page yet, it kind of skips to the last page, but it's related to this. How often, how, how much time does this ad hoc committee have to review? Is it, are, because we're saying, you know, they're gonna, they're gonna read the, if it's a book, they're gonna read the book. If it's a movie, they're gonna watch the movie.
And twenty business days, according to the procedure I have in front of me.
Oh, is it twenty business days?
That's what the procedure that I have.
So it's, we chunk it out.
Yep.
Well, it's good, cause then they have to read the whole book.
Yep.
Yes, which I am very much, yeah, yeah.
They're not gonna just take sections out.
Context is key, right? Context matters and.
I believe in our original, the original process, we did define more, and maybe I'm wrong. What I'm looking for is, okay, if it takes twenty days to review it, then how long do we take to get back to the person? Like, can we define that a little bit clearer? Like if somebody submits a book, then it's gonna be twenty days to review and then within ten days they'll get a response. Or like, there's a piece of that I feel that is missing here.
There's, on the last page, on the last page, it says, like, we have twenty more days of receiving the request.
Yeah, it said when challenged materials would be viewed. Yeah, so we, once it's challenged, how many days till it's reviewed? Two weeks maybe, or like, when is that committee gonna get together? Then they have twenty days and then how long till they're actually informed? How long is the whole process? There's basically three steps in the process. And I don't know, I guess it's helpful for a parent to know, like if you question a book, is it gonna be six months, is it gonna be thirty days, is it gonna be, you know what I mean? Like, what does that look like in total?
I would, i- if I were, cause we've not been through this process. And we can certainly check with some of our colleagues that have gone through a similar formal process like this. But I would envision thirty days from start to finish is a reasonable place. Given time to assemble, getting people's schedules aligned to, you know, meet and all that kinda stuff. So, you know, I, I think that would give us some grace, but we can definitely check with some of our colleagues, right? And that's realistic too.
It could be shorter.
And it could be shorter, yeah.
I looked at one of those books tonight and that's a very thick book.
Yeah, well, like I said, we.
Watching a two hour.
And, and again, um, you know, knowing a colleague who has gone through this in their district, that team had a book and they were each responsible for, you read the first two chapters, you're reading the second two chapters, whatever. I know that might not be ideal, some are gonna read the whole book if you have the time. But some of these folks, you know, they're, they're working, they're teachers, they're admin and, you know, finding time to read on their own is a challenge. But that's, that's part of what we would potentially do.
And I actually had a question, you touched on something, another question I had too about, you know, there are members of the community on here, teachers, you know, what specifically for? So the principal, the teachers, the licensed media specialist, all people, part of district staff. You know? Is, you know, we hear a lot about, you know, loss of classroom time or loss of, you know, stepping away from the classroom, things like that. Does this take, is this, is this committee supposed to do this on their own time? Or are they allowed to or expected to, two different things to take time away from their day to do this? And I'm not saying right or wrong, whatever, but I think the expectation of.
Yeah.
These folks, I think, might be important.
Right, they're, they're, so this is part of what we tried to capture in the cost. We, again, just trying to be very transparent about, yes, this comes with a cost. So i- it's a cost of time.
Yeah, you said that.
Um, and, 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 and if I'm doing, if I'm, if I'm expecting a teacher to do this within their contract a day, that means they're gonna have to do it over their prep, which means I'm gonna have to potentially pay for a prep, right? Administrator's a little different, obviously, but nonetheless, it's, it's time that they will take above and beyond their normally scheduled duties. Now, I get it when we have committees and you sign up to be a part of that committee, you're accepting the responsibilities and the scope of that. And oftentimes that might require you to do work outside of your duty time, okay? So, um, I do know that that happens as well. So we haven't, you know, determined how that structure will look.
Sure.
At this point, but there is going to be time involved, we know that.
Can I make a, and this is just, um, so in my real world, we have to review stuff like this. In a different context, but in general. And, um, when we need committee members or legislators or whatever, you know, federal bureaucrats, you know, to get what we, we just set a regular cadence to the meeting, like every month. And if there's materials that are there, so people get it on their calendar. And of course, this is part of their job, which I assume with the library media specialists and all that, this would be part of their job. I understand there's a cost, but we just say, okay, the meeting's next week. Yes, here are the materials, here's the agenda. Or within a week or two weeks, hey, there's nothing there, we're not going to meet this month. And that kinda takes the, it's still ad hoc, cause you don't meet until there's content.
But you have it blocked.
But you have it blocked, you've committed the time, that sort of thing. And that usually helps the process quite a bit. But the other thing to consider in this is that if we're gonna be reviewing materials, are we gonna buy a book for everybody? You can't.
Um, yes, and so that's part of the cost if we're talking, yeah, so yes. Another district that my colleagues in, that they bought books for the entire committee. For, if, if the movie, we're gonna have to buy the movie or whatever so that people can watch it.
And we will have to commit district resources to that.
To doing that.
And potentially that would be a resource that would be questionable. We would commit district resources to that, right? In order to give it its due diligence.
And so I've been through this before and, um, not in this context, but like I said, in a similar context. And you always run into situations, I, I love Jess's comment about context. Cause this actually came up in the Supreme Court decision of a couple, I don't know, ten, fifteen years ago. I can't remember the name of it, when a student actually challenged. It was a very famous court case. And, um, I think the student was actually the student rep on the board when a book or some, some things, parents were saying they wanted a banned or whatever. And what came up in that case was you can't just take one paragraph, one page, you got to put into context. And when you consider the time, the size of the book you just mentioned, in order to actually participate fully on this committee, you have to agree to read the whole thing in context. Uh, you can't just cherry pick a sentence, a paragraph, or even a chapter out. Because it destroys the whole learning thing of the context of the book to, to satisfy the rest of the criteria. So are we, and, and again, this is procedural. So it doesn't really, in my opinion, we would wanna separate that out into a completely different conversation. But is there going, are there going to be, when you, when you take people that are not, that this isn't their job, is there gonna be some sort of requirements? I mean, what do you, how do you do that? How do you make them read the whole thing? In other words, is, is that ever been discussed? I know in, in my world, they have to in order to be on this particular committee or whatever.
Yeah, that's, that's part of expectation.
Yeah, but, but that's my job.
I, I, I understand that, but, but again, we have committee, we, we have to entrust, you know, our staff, any of our parents that might be on the committee. And in the case that I'm referencing, this district actually has students with parent permission, um, knowing that they might read controversial material, but we have student, they have student perspective as well, reading the materials. So, um, and, and again, I'm, I'm gonna be honest, on a committee of, of ten people, you know, eight might have done their homework, right? And two are gonna hope that the other eight did their homework. So generally speaking, I think we'll have sufficient readership. But that's something that admin will have to figure out and talk with our colleagues in neighboring districts to see, you know, how does that committee, you know, work and can you trust the process? I think we'll get enough, yeah, I do, I do.
I'm just, yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Paid or non-paid?
And, and I think it, it, for the sake of this conversation, I think you can't go without stating that it is, will be additional work.
Yeah, it is.
Already very full points.
Yeah.
Well, and I think if we do go through and do an audit, like we talked about, that can eliminate.
Should catch up.
Should catch, if there's any issues, you know what I mean?
Big, big ones.
The only thing I have regarding the, are we at this part now, resources reconsideration guideline form? Okay, resources reconsideration guidelines for form. I understand there's a cost, I fully understand that. My concern is that as a parent, if I read that and I see it's gonna cost the district three thousand dollars, I am way more than likely to go, oh, forget it, like I'm not gonna do this. Is there a way if we wanna include that, if we have to include it, can we move it to the bottom of the form in smaller text or something? Because to me, it's just like a red flag of like, don't do this. Cause we didn't, we didn't have it on our previous form.
Right.
And so it's just concerning to me that that's going to make somebody say, oh gosh, I'm not gonna do that.
Yeah, I.
I mean, that was my opinion, so I'll take everybody else, I'd love to hear other people's perspective on that.
No, and if you have something to add to that, Dr. Thomas, my challenge with the dollar amount being put in is, you know, even given the fact that there, there was a, a book earlier that had been found in the district and it had just been removed, I, I think, you know, to say that, to, to give a price like this, I'm challenged by that.
Okay, and I'm, I'm, I'm fine with maybe, uh, the specified dollar amount. I think we need to be very clear with our community, this comes with a cost. If we are using taxpayer dollars to buy what will be questionable books, you know, using one of them that we heard tonight, we're gonna buy ten copies of a really profane book. We need to know that, right? And so I'm, I, I think, I'm, I'm open to the dollar figure. What I don't want is the community to see, let's say, over the course of a year, and again, I'm just being hypothetical here, we have five books that get called in the question. And those five books with staff time, I'm paying for prep times, whatever, and eventually we get to the tune of, um, seven thousand dollars, six thousand dollars, I don't know, whatever thousands of dollars it is. Do we owe that to our community to say, we spent whatever thousands of dollars on this process? I, I think they need to know this process comes with a cost. I would, I would hate for somebody, I hear your point, but the flip side would also be like, well, gosh, I didn't know it was gonna cost us this much, I mean, why, you know, why are we? You know, I might be that person, why are we spending all the money on that? And that's, that could be, you know, you know, supplemental curriculum or whatever, you know?
I hear you, but we're also using taxpayer dollars to purchase these questionable books, books to begin with.
I, I don't, don't dispute you. Yeah, and, and so that's all it is, that's, that's what we're, that's what we're talking about.
That's what we would give them.
And again, dollar amount.
I'm okay having on the form, but can we move it to the bottom so it's not this huge red flag to people?
The, you know, I just think that there needs to be a little bit more, um, in the, I mean, I, I get your, your taking into consideration a, a lot of different factors to come up with that dollar amount. However, when I look at that dollar amount and I take, for instance, the three community members that spoke tonight, it would take five seconds for those to just be like, nope, that book needs to go, that book needs to go, there's no money.
There may be, I think, I think there will be some that we can screen out through an audit process.
Yeah.
But there are going to be other challenges. And so what I'm saying is.
And I understand.
I think we can pull the dollar figure and just say something like, costs associated with this process will be bore by the district. Or, you know, I mean, we just need to be very clear, you know? I, I just don't wanna do a process that we know will incur costs on, um, without letting our community know.
Acknowledge it.
Yeah, we gotta acknowledge it.
No, and that, that's, that's really valid. Especially given, you know, your, what you shared with us, Dr. Edwards, that there has been no form filled out to date.
Yeah.
So us as a district, taking that initiative and doing that audit, pulling the things that, you know, are red flagged, that, that'll go a long way as far as building trust and, and, you know, all the things. So.
So we'll adjust for that.
Yeah, and then, um, let's see, what else do I have? The only other thing I have, oh, the only other comment I had on this. Oh, I did have a question on six. Request for resource reconsideration forms will be processed one at a time. In the order they are received, additional challenge requests cannot be submitted until the reconsideration committee acts on the initial request. And the decision of the district reconsideration committee is binding for all schools on the level involved. My only, if we can define how long it's gonna be, if it's thirty days, I don't have an issue with this. But I think until we have that defined, I guess, if, if we don't have it defined as a parent, if I put in one book challenge and I cannot challenge anymore, and I understand we haven't had any forms filled out, right? Which is a good thing.
Yeah.
But does that really prohibit somebody from, really the number of books that can actually be challenged in a total year?
I took that as challenger cost on the same.
I took that the same way, because it's, yeah, and, and.
I could be wrong.
I, no, I guess I could be quite the same way.
On that then.
And then I, and then I, in my notes, I don't have my computer on, but I remember this very well. I had an additional concern, not just the same source that you, that you're quoting on this one. Because if we have a hundred people complaining about, how are they gonna know somebody already complained about it, that sort of thing? But I, like Jess, I took it as to be the same, the same item.
The same item, you know, not necessarily.
So we can, so, so a couple of things to this point that I think comes to my mind. One, I think, uh, you know, book challenge. One, I think, you know, book challenge comes forward on Title X, you know, on, on, on a webpage or something through a curriculum instruction, we can put, you know, a queue of like what's in process. So folks can just go there first before you submit and go through all this whole ordeal. Oh, that one's already being under review. My other question, which I thought you were gonna go to, is the bandwidth of the team. So if you've got a book, and you've got a book, and you've got a book, that's three months worth, I mean, that's a lot of reading for books, you know? So again, in the priority order, it's, we, we have, unless we assemble multiple teams, and, and folks can just, I, I'm not saying that we're gonna have a barrage, but I, I just, I'm mindful of the load.
Can I?
Mindful of the load of our staff.
This is what I think, and I, first of all, the first couple of times we get a book in, or an item, or a magazine, or whatever, it's gonna be kind of a very detailed painful process where the process is actually gonna get refined. After that, I think it's gonna go a lot quicker to the point where you not, you may not even have to convene an, an ad hoc committee. And it's not to, it's not to negate somebody's complaint, but it's because you've already dealt with the same author, maybe the same thing, or whatever. And you, you know, somebody, a library media specialist looks at it and it never actually makes it to the committee, a decision is pre-made.
Yeah.
And, and I think it's gonna, I think it's gonna start off slow and then move faster and faster as it becomes more refined. So where I agree with that initially, and I also agree with letting people know that it costs upfront. So they're mindful of that. So this doesn't become, you know, the latest fad. And that's, that's the other thing too, they understand that. So the combination of those two, I think it's gonna hone this process quite a bit. But at first, it's, it's gonna be painful and then it's gonna go quicker. So I think that concern is a short-term concern. And the definition of short-term, of course, is out there, but.
We don't know yet, yeah. And, 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 and also be very clear of kind of where I believe my concern has great validity. The amount of data requests that we process is absolutely insane. And we have one staff member who that really became her full-time job almost for two months, my first two months of being here. It was absolutely insane. And in, it's pennies on the dollar, right? And by statute, we can't do anything more. But that's my concern. We are very, very lean, very thin with staff. And they're already overburdened. And I'm not saying this is not important. I just, I have to, I wouldn't be doing my job if I also didn't protect staff and the loads that they are trying to manage right now. So that's, I'll just leave that there. That's why I'm saying what I'm saying about, you know, this process. So we'll, we'll see, we'll learn, and we'll, we'll adjust. We'll definitely adjust.
And one, I, I, one thing I would suggest we consider adding here to the point of the timeframe. If below number ten, it says that the Director of Teaching and Learning, or Desny, will schedule a conference within twenty day, working days of receiving the request to discuss it. I think we could add a number eleven and say, a decision will be rendered within thirty days of receiving the request for it.
That's fair.
Yeah, I like that.
I, I'd like to qualify that a little bit. And also for the fact that you just said staff and all that. If we add in that regular cadence of meetings, then, and given the fact that we may be inundated with lots of requests, and they are coming in, what if, if you figure out if that is a good idea, then usually you say, it's so many days after the committee met to discuss it. Because if you all of a sudden get two hundred items in, then, then the conference within twenty working days, you're never gonna get out of a conference. So, so actually.
There's a fear around that.
I think it's data request land.
Well, we had, we had three books tonight, I mean.
Right.
Well, we've had zero forms submitted. So we have, we have to remember that as well.
But this will now be very public.
Right.
And so awareness is on the top of the people's minds, so forms will come.
Yeah, yeah, I, I, I hesitate to admit that there have been none submitted.
I shouldn't have said anything.
Well, and, you know, going on with that, with the whole forms not being submitted, you know, and the resources reconsideration guidelines form, in number four, all fields of the form must be completed in full, meaningful manner. The, you know, it also talks about the, the, in the form, it says that the book needs to be read in full. You know, in certain circumstances, such as the ones given tonight in public forum, when, I mean, the, the form is lengthy, it is, and I, and I understand why. And I'm not, you know, for many circumstances, I think a lot of it is very valid. But again, going back to, you know, kind of what was presented and the concerns of a previous book, and how that was handled quickly and, and, you know, it was just handled by the administration, the straight of staff. I think, I appreciate the concern over the, the staff and, and the effort that this could entail. I think that, given the fact that, like, like you had shared, Mary, that, you know, this will, this, as this happens, it will be honed, we'll be able to hone it in. I think.
Yeah, Director Bullen, I, I would expect that some of the most blatant examples, like we heard out of context tonight, would get picked up fairly quickly without a, a committee, okay? So, and, and, and again, I'll, I'll dispute myself. There, there's a book hit list out there, okay?
Yeah, that is true.
And, and so, I mean, we even taught our starting point, let's just grab this hit list, with the top forty that is circulating, circulating around the country. Let's run them through a screener and kind of start there. So those kind of books and texts, I think we could audit, you know, through our audit screening process. But there, it's the nuanced ones.
Correct, yeah.
That, I, I just don't know what kind of gate we may be opening with nuance. And, and, and we just don't know until we get into the space.
Well, and I, maybe I could provide an example of that. So during my campaign, I had a parent reach out to me about a, a second grade book in the Glendale Library. And it's just a book of a pig. And when you look at it, it looks super sweet and innocent. It's a little book about a pig. But when you read it, now, it talks about the pig who ran away from home because he was mad at his parents. And then the pig got captured by a gang. And then the gang called him all these mean names and he tied him up. And then the pig said he wanted to commit suicide. And so while it might be age appropriate, and, so this is one of those books where I could see hitting this list, right? Because while it might be age appropriate and all, is, is that really something we should be teaching our kids? Like the messaging behind it, you know what I mean? So I think there's a variable of, like you said, there is the hit list of the top, what are the top forty that are being talked about around the country. But then there are these other books that a parent is gonna get and say, oh, my gosh, I do not want my kid learning about a pig who's committing, gonna wanna commit suicide in second grade. And another parent might go, I want to see the problem. You know, depending upon their situation, right? So that's where I think this, this could come into play.
We just don't know what we don't know.
Well, when you're talking, like, going back to pre-K through twelve criteria for selection, in H, it says positive emphasis on the ability, you know, place, it says respect social, cultural, racial plurality and, and place positive emphasis on the abilities of, of individuals. I think, you know, the, I highlighted in green the positive emphasis because, I mean, you know, that kind of book, it is questionable. And that would be something that someone could fill a form out and that could take administrative space and time to, to figure out. I think what I'd like to see as policy is that, you know, when we're talking about all of the costs that we may be incurring as the floodgates have been opened, you know, per se, we also have to remember, we have a community to, that we, you know, answer to. And it is very valid that they are wondering how and why these books. You know, where, where is the accountability to date? So if it is going to cost something to get us to a space that we feel comfortable.
I'm not opposed to incurring the cost. I just wanna be transparent about the cost. No, no question about paying the cost. The need, need is there. And, and I also am mindful, like, you know, there, you don't write policy for the extremes of anything. You write it for the general.
Right.
Because there have been Sesame Street books called into question.
Right. The hop on pop, there's all of the.
So, so literally, it could be endless. Because I don't like this, or I don't like that. So I just, we'll, we'll have to see how this goes. That's all I'm in this to say. Okay.
Okay.
As we look at, how do we adjust and how do we plant down on our variable cost?
Right.
It's one of those variables that you just can't really predict.
Absolutely. You brought it full circle. You found a variable cost.
So I'm going to go on to the next policy and with the.
Thank you, Dr. Edwards.
That was worth the last two hours of our time.
I really appreciate it. This is really, and, and, and I'll just formally close. I know we lost a lot of our community, but, but this, we knew this was important, which is why we wanted to take the time to do this well. And for our community watching this back, we thank our community for your perspectives. It means a lot to us. And we want to be responsive to the needs of our students and ultimately our, our broader community. So thank you for the discussion.
Now you're ready for the double difference.
That's where your punchline, sir.
You know, if I, if I may, and hopefully I'm not speaking out of turn for being in the role that I'm in today, but I think the biggest concern I had before we move on here that I, I have to say is the fact that, like Dr. Edwards said, you know, there, we, I think we've got a district that's open to people calling in and saying, hey, I don't like this, like we did before with that other book. And we've had a form and a policy out here. The shock value was not necessary and is, is a little disturbing, quite frankly, to me. So, and I'm, I can only speak for myself. So I think the bigger issue is, is why did people not just describe what they're upset about in support of the policy or the policy changes? And is there something we're doing that prevented them from actually just looking at our website, finding the existing policy in the form, or calling their principal or teacher? You know, and that, that has to be said because I personally feel that this made it worse, not better. And as a note, because our board meetings are on YouTube, we've had this happen before, where we will have to censor the first half, which is, it does it a service to the message they're trying to say.
Yeah, there'll be a lot of edits later to.
Yeah.
And, and, and I, and I understand the point that the community members were sharing, particularly when you talked about the protocols of, of public comment. And, and so again, the point's made. It's very clear. And so I wanna, you know, I, I, we're not, we're not endorsing that kind of context for our kids, you know?
Right.
And so I, I think that's a fair push, that we understand the emotion and the passion behind some of our community and just want to make sure that, you know, where we need to make corrections in our practices, we're open to doing that. But I think there's a decorum to keep that we can uphold as a.
There's a higher level thing here for, nobody called the district that we know of.
Yeah.
Nobody filled out the form, nobody looked through the website.
Yeah.
So they didn't do or follow what we already had.
Yeah.
It's not like they called and we didn't respond. Somewhere along the line, they felt that this was necessary without trying any other avenue. And I think that either they feel that we're not open to this, even though all this stuff was out there, which is the bigger question. Or was there another motivation? And that's, that's the thing that I want to make sure. So next time, we had stopped reading the rules and we're gonna have to do that again because, you know, the thing that was trying to prevent of exposing the world to this because it was so bad is exactly what happened. And therefore, we're, like you said, we're gonna have to censor or, or take it off because we can't put this on YouTube. So that's the only thing that I wanted to say. And that, and the bigger question is, is why, is there something that we're doing that I think we all have to keep in mind that prevents them from actually following the protocol to nip this before it gets this far? Okay.
I think that doveth hills nicely into our district crisis meeting.
Yes, let's move on. Sorry, Jim.
Oh, quite right. Thank you.
Vice Chair, Ms. Schoolmore, Dr. Thomas, and Estine Towns. Really, some really minor changes throughout this policy. Added some small specifics. A great example is under our site plans, it indicated fire alarms. Actually, it's pole stations that were marking on our map. So we cleaned it up. On E, we took out addresses. Don't seem to be quite as important these days as they did. Phone numbers for sure, but I'm sure as you read through this, you could see all of the changes are quite minor, but updated the policy this annual review. Would I be aligned?
I did not, I did not read this one to shit.
It's ready, no, it's ready.
I read it, but I didn't see any damage.
Does anybody have any questions?
No.
Yeah, so just more of a, so the fire inspector would generally go through some of these different warning systems and fire suppression systems on a regular basis anyways, right?
Yeah, so we're inspected. This is all those relate to our crisis plan. Our, our systems are inspected annually and State Farm marshal comes through our building. It's on a rotation.
Oh, you just saw the very last. Tell me, any warning systems?
Want to go to the next one?
You're good, we're good.
Okay, thank you.
I had one question.
Sure.
And it's, it's, I know it's embedded in here, but wasn't called out. And it comes from history of going through our, you know, tabletop exercises and all that. We, even though we, we include fire police and all that, there doesn't, we left out city leaders. And I, before, when there's been an event and the city manager, the mayor's of Savage in particular in one instance, were not notified or not part of some of the plans. So they couldn't respond when people were calling into them, that sort of thing. I was, yeah, I didn't see that called out here.
So that would be the community crisis response. And we have an event annually for that, Mary?
Yeah, I, I know we do, yeah.
Yeah.
You say sheriff's office, fire departments, police departments, ambulance, and county level emergency management, and public health services. I would just, it, it says community partners, I get that, but.
Well, for an emergency, as it responds to a crisis, I mean, I, I think that covers most. I mean, nine on one would be the one number I would call. I would call city administration, for example, for a crisis.
I, I will say, what you're inquiring about is actually something that Kristi and I reviewed in terms of our threat level protocols of when we actually make notifications to the city, for example. And that actually happened about a month ago. Where we had a situation on a campus that we addressed, got it solved. But people began emailing city manager and the mayor. got it solved, but, um, people began emailing city manager and the mayor. And they didn't know anything about the situation and it involved an SRO. So, um, so we, we've addressed that internally to tighten that up so that we will give notification, um, when we involve, you know, a city, in this case, uh, an SRO. Cause that's usually where it will impact the city for us, so.
And I want to add that sometimes because we're on multiple campuses and the, the city boundaries are fairly fluid. That sometimes when we only notify one or the other.
They all got it.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, they, they all get it. So, so even though it involved, you know, X, Y, Z municipality, we know we have families who live in Credit River that might not go, you know, respond to Prior Lake municipality, but they might inquire.
Okay.
So, they all get it.
Great.
Yep.
Any other questions?
I would just add to that, to, um, SNSC as well.
Oh, that's right.
Yeah.
Yep.
And, and I didn't know, I actually, that was the one, one note in my margin that I wrote down was on number two, actually, Jim, was do we need to actually mention by name? So Savage, Prior Lake, Credit River. Do we need to mention?
All of our municipalities.
I know, I know, I'm trying to find them. Not trying to add to or be descriptive just for the sake of being descriptive, but
My fear would be that we would miss somebody. I mean, we have townships and we have open enrollees. Yeah.
That's fair.
All right, so, um, closing that one out, there are no first reading of policies. We're going to go on to second reading of policy and start with policy 516. Thank you, Jim.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
And that's student medication.
He has changed since we last interviewed him.
So, any questions, concerns, or we're gonna move on? We hope to close this out before midnight. And, um, so I think that's it.
Yeah.
Actually, and so we're going to break.
Oh, wait.
Informational items.
We have superintendents, that's right. Superintendent Relations and information items.
Oh, I have one, yeah. Yeah.
We are, town hall meeting on April eighteenth, at Prior Lake High School. Same is at the forum room or whatever it's called, right off the main office. Seven o'clock PM. That is the AM at first, I'm like, huh. Seven o'clock PM.
It says six in the agenda.
It should be seven.
Oh, it is seven, it's seven?
Should be seven.
There's a title to the agenda then.
It's seven on the calendar.
Online, it says seventeen.
It's online, yeah, cause on my
Six.
Okay.
Well, is that the draft?
This is the agenda. Oh, it might have been the draft, actually.
Oh, this is my original.
Yeah, the final was.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay.
And then we have future agenda topics. So, um, on our policies, we have that anybody can send in a request to the chair, um, for something to be added to a study session or anything like that. Uh, and I know that we kind of talked about this a little bit in our retreat. So what we want to do here is bring this up as a formal agenda item to, to kind of make sure that everyone's aware and also to call it out in a public session instead of emails and then decide what's gonna go on. So, the way we want to do this is to give a formalized opportunity for people to suggest things for future study sessions, not for board meetings, because board meetings are business. And if it does resolve and a something is to be voted on, then that's something else. But, uh, to give this opportunity, bring this up and then just have people do a thumbs up or a thumbs down if they wanted it added on. One of the things we also talked about in the retreat is, um, also moving forward with trying to, um, give pre-agendas way in advance. So, we know where we have room for, for things. Because, just because, you know, someone says, please add this, we may not have adequate opportunity, given other items we need to discuss, like budget and, and all that. And if we want to always go longer in a study session, that, that's fine too. But that would be a, an agreement of the board as a whole. So, in this case, I'm sorry, I tried to run to the board meeting. I'm thinking of the time, but, um, in this case, we, we did want to bring this up at this time for future agenda topics. So I'm gonna open it up to anybody who wants to add something in. We're gonna talk about, you know, i- if something gets added in that doesn't really belong at our level, then we'll talk about that. But for the most part, just, you know, mention it, thumbs up, thumbs down, and then, and then we'll try to deal with the logistics of it. Does that make sense? Okay, so, yes.
Chair Franz, I have, um, given the tragic, um, shooting in the Tennessee school, I would like to see us have a conversation around either our school safety plan or an active shooter plan, if we have an active shooter plan in, plan in place. And/or, um, just a conversation with the board about, given an event of a sh- of a tragic event like that in our district, what is, what is our procedures as a board? Like, what do we do? What is our ex, you know, what can we expect as far as?
I'm gonna call Jim up. Jim, so this is the policy we just reviewed. And we talked about the, we talked about the, um, the, um, um, tabletop exercises, uh, that we've done before. So, the first thing that I want to do, if that's okay with everybody, is bring Jim back up to kind of talk about what's already included and so we can be a little bit more specific, if that's okay, Lisa?
Yeah, and I'm really being, my specific is the active shooter plan. Do we have a plan in place in each building to address an active shooter plan?
And the short answer is we do. Ron Hyde Fight is a great example of that. And we, uh, the schools drill that, um,
Five times a year.
Five times a year.
Review those protocols. I would say, I would say this, though. We are working with local municipalities, um, around engaging our police, um, and other entities in that process to enact kind of a, a tabletop, like, in the community. That's something that, um, our police departments have said they have interest in. They have to have internal conversations and calibration first, but that is something that's on the horizon. We also just had a team, um, about five, six of us last Friday, with Secret Service and FBI locally here, um, reviewing, um, active, you know, campus shooting scenarios, what has been done, what are the look for, things of that nature. So, that team has also, um, been engaged locally here, which was actually got phenomenal training, by the way. So, thank you for that. And, um, but more to come for all of you when we formalize that partnership, um, with our, uh, local police and, uh, fire, et cetera, to scale, uh, a, a scenario.
So, the question that I have, and I don't mean to speak for Lisa, is if, if that just happened, I think the question to the, to the board is, do we want maybe, um, a presentation on that at some point in time so that the public knows and we're all on the same page with that information? Cause I know I've been through some of it before too, but I'm a legacy board member now and there's new people here.
This will be a topic that we'll bring to the board, um, naturally, for us as we formalize this process. Um, and kind of taking it to a, a different level for us as a district. So, yes, um, I, I, I'm working a little bit at the mercy of our partners, our community partners and agencies to be able to have the ability to, to deliver. So, once we know more from them, I will brief the board, you know, via an email to say, hey, this is the date that we're thinking about and then kind of engage you in that planning process.
I could add to something.
Yep, yep.
So, we are also developing, um, crisis management. That's not exactly the right term. We hired Haley Heidelberg as our Urgency Preparedness Response Coordinator. Big skills, and we are actually developing and building that component of the operations department. So there is an exciting time and there's a lot to learn and, um, it's changing all the time.
Yeah, and unfortunately, we have to have these kind of conversations. I mean, well taken.
That should be the highest priority.
Yeah, it is.
Yeah, and it is.
Really, sadly.
Which is why we asked for that position. I mean, that was something that we are so deeply appreciative of the board supporting because you've heard me say a dozen times, safety is top priority, you know, when they send their pride and precious gems to us.
May I make a comment related to that?
Yeah.
I think, you know, and we, we have received a few notes about this very topic, you know, hundreds, but a few. And, you know, when this first, you know, happened, you know, yesterday and today, it's almost like you could tell me every day, we've got these procedures in place, we've got, we've got these plans in place. Where, you could tell me every day as a parent and it still wouldn't be enough, right? So I didn't know, and is there, I mean, this, this is a hard one. This is a heavy one. And for whatever reason, I couldn't tell you why, because every single one of them is tragic and it's too many. Maybe it was just something about this one. Because I have a nine-year-old. Is there anything? I'm speaking, really putting on my parent hat here. Is there anything, any kind of communication that even over email could just go out to our families that could say, we hear you, this is horrible? This, and I, I think, if I remember, we did something similar, I think after Uvalde happened. Is there something? Like I said, you could send it to me every day and it wouldn't be enough, right? Is there anything planned just so that we can, to Lisa's point, and I'd love a presentation and a refresh, right? Just to know what we have in place and things like that. Probably could hear that ten times and it wouldn't be enough, right?
Yeah.
I think just to
We could, we could put, we, we can put something out, um, that one lets our community know, we understand this is happening in our country. And what we are, what we have in place and what we intend to continue to do. I'll, I'll be honest with you, uh, and, and I can't speak for previous leadership here, but it got to a point where I was writing these letters, you know? Every month as a superintendent. And, uh, it, it, it almost became, like, I didn't know what else to say.
Right.
Right? And, and so it's not been a part of my regular practice and not, I shouldn't say, I shouldn't say not all or whatever, but many superintendents just don't continually put these out because of where we've unfortunately come.
Right.
But I can definitely, uh, as we look at this topic for us in a new way, for what is to come for our district, validate the current reality, acknowledge what we currently have in place, and then here's where, where we aspire to grow to. So I can definitely get that put out.
And I, and I hear you. I, you don't want to dilute it, right, either? And unfortunately, we've kind of gotten to that point as well, right? I just, like, I would never want you to send out anything that would be perceived as diluted or
Oh, no, it, it, no, it, it, it'll mean something to, to many, still, I'm sure, so.
Admittedly, it's closer.
So, we were already planning to have an update on this?
Yeah, yeah, this is already, like, in our wheelhouse for things, you know? This, this all also, as you recall, started with the Kanan conversations. And again, different level of safety and security, but it is about keeping our campuses safe, keeping our campuses clean. That, that is something that we take very seriously here in this district. And we've talked about it many a time from the dais. And this is, again, last Friday's in-service, you know, with Secret Service and FBI was yet another layer for us to continually expand our knowledge on how we can be more proactive in our efforts. And, um, you know, with our active shooter potential partners, with our police, fire, et cetera. That is something that there's, there's interest in doing that cross, you know, partner collaborative and, and doing a scaled event.
And then having an understanding of what is the board's role in that?
Sure.
If, if something happens, what am I to expect as a board?
That's actually part of, when are we doing our next? Cause we had board members show up to the last one.
So we're talking, um,
Like the
certification?
Well, the, the whole
Are the community crisis response in April?
It's April. It's April nineteenth, I believe.
Okay. And given the questions, uh, whatever, um, I would assume that it would be prudent for us, especially in the current environment, to just remind the public, maybe, at a board meeting, that this is in the works. And then, since it's already scheduled, um, I don't think we need to thumbs up?
No, I, this is a natural occurrence.
Okay, okay. All right. Anybody else? Okay, uh, in the interest of time, I also had one that I would like to do. I'd like to bring policy two oh three up ahead of the normal schedule, which wouldn't happen, I think, until after the policy committee and all that kind of stuff. Just because we had some unwritten protocols in place about certain criteria, you know, written messages, all that. And obviously, there were some questions on the last MSBA meeting where we had more than three board members, et cetera. And, um, so I just want to see if we can't bring that up for a review and maybe go a little bit above the baseline statute since it kind of requires us to be lawyers in order to understand where it's good and where it's not and all that. And like, you know, we had protocols in place before. So I'd like to bring that back up to a study session when we have time so that we can actually go over that and make sure that we are not, we're meeting but exceeding the, the current, um, uh, responsibilities and also the communication of the responsibilities. And what I mean by that is before, we had an unwritten protocol saying, hey, if you're gonna show up somewhere, RSVP, um, so that sometimes it's sent out notes going, okay, it's okay, the MSBA stuff is okay. Here are the rules and this is okay. So there wasn't
That was leave.
Yeah, so, but, I mean, here's the thing is you shouldn't have had to leave, you didn't know.
Right.
But if we had
Erred on too much caution.
But if we have this protocol ahead of times with RSVPing to Martha and then Martha would say, or legal would say, or the chair would say, it's okay, you guys, so you wouldn't have had to do that. But you didn't know. And that's, that's something that has happened quite a bit. And we do have a fairly new board, so I'm, I'm asking if we could bring that up ahead of schedule, policy two oh three, where to discuss policy.
Is it committees or?
Policy two oh three
It's your operating norms.
Yeah, it's the operating norms.
Oh, the operating norms, okay.
Cause we never, like I said, memorialized what our old process was cause we had people that weren't new. And so now that we have a lot of new people, you know, there's a lot of questions that I don't even think about. And we don't have them written down and we don't have a procedure written down or a process or whatever, so.
Say thumbs up. Yeah, me too, thumbs up.
Great, okay. And if that's it, then I'm gonna adjourn and transition to the board meeting. And I will take a bio break in between that time. Please do.
I'm gonna call this meeting to order. First, we're gonna stand and do the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have five members present. Director Burnick and Chair Crosby are missing. I am acting board chair. And just for the record, uh, Director Olstand is acting clerk. I, can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
So made.
Okay, um, by Director Bullion, seconded by Director Velazquez. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone not in favor? Good, that passes, five zero. Moving ahead, I'm going to pass this on to, um, Dr. Thomas to introduce the business items and the people that are going to talk about them.
Thank you, Vice Chair Franz. Uh, this evening, we have our, uh, our standing resolution for reducing and discontinuing programs and positions. And our interim executive director of, uh, Admin Services, Emily Herman, will share that information with us.
Thank you, Dr. Thomas, and members of the board. We're bringing forward the, um, resolution for reduction
We're bringing forward the Resolution for Reduction and Discontinuing of Programs and Positions to a recommendation to remove the middle school Laker Online program for your consideration this evening.
Okay, can I have a motion to approve the resolution?
So made.
Second?
Second.
Okay, okay, this is a roll call vote. I'm going to start with Director Atkinson.
Can I have a question?
Discussion, I'm sorry, discussion.
So I have a question. Do we have any students currently enrolled in this program? How many students would we have enrolled in Laker Online?
The current enrollment was six.
Six, okay. And do we have other programs that they could potentially enroll in?
Dr. Edwards, he can speak to that?
Yes, and just for clarification, we have more students currently enrolled this year, right now. But projecting those students out, the number of students who would be middle school students next year is that number of six. So so this is something that our, as the registration process was going on about a month ago, our teams were working together to meet the needs and help those families, I guess, transition back into in-person learning where they desire. And I believe that most, if not all, have done so or are planning to do so for next year.
Any other questions?
Yeah, and from a staff and a support perspective, will those personnel also transition more into the in-person learning versus the online learning?
Yes, and that's actually something that is impacted by the action you'll take here later with some shifting of staff and the non-renewals as a result of shifting staff into positions in person.
Okay, thank you.
And can I ask, how many staff are impacted by this?
So we just currently have 1.2 FTE allocated, so one full-time teacher. And that teacher does have rights into a position within the district. And 0.2 is an elective area that a person fulfilling that role, there's some shifting around that happens.
Thank you.
Questions?
So to clarify on that, one of the non-renewals is due to the tenured position moving back into the high school and middle school that led to not enough positions for one of the probationary staff members. So that is one of the non-renewals you see on the list tonight.
Any other questions? And this is to discontinue it after the school year?
That is correct.
No further questions? Okay, this is a roll call vote. I'm going to start with Director Atkinson.
Aye.
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 Aye, that passes 5-0. Next, we're going to move on to the approval of probationary teachers as non-renew. And do I ask for a motion on this first, for discussion? Okay, I'd like to have a motion on this for approval and then discussion?
So made.
Second.
Director Herman, would you care to?
So tonight, we're bringing forward the list of non-renewals for your recommendation for approval. This is for probationary certified staff members who are still within their probationary period with the district. Non-renewals can be for multiple different reasons. It could be lack of registration or sections in an area. It could be due to a long-term sub-position or temporary position, a licensure requirement where we have to non-renew, and then also performance. We bring them forward all together in one so that we can move forward with the rehiring for those who are eligible for rehire. Open to any questions if anyone has.
Just for record, we did discuss this at the study session. Are there any questions, concerns, or comments anyone would like to make before we vote?
Director Herman, I just wanted to say I appreciate the comments made during the study session and the explanation of how this non-renewal process works. I know it can be confusing and just generally alarming when you see such a lengthy list. But then when you couple it with those that are being hired back, it lessens the blow. Thank you.
Okay, so all in favor? Aye. Against? That passes 5-0. Okay, next is also Executive Director of Administrative Services Herman. And this is the additional staffing for the 2022-23 educational support staff. I'd like to take a motion.
So made.
Second.
Okay. Director Herman, would you like to?
Yes, thank you. Members of the board, we're bringing forward an additional staffing request for MCA testing coordinator for multiple different reasons to help facilitate the testing this year. It's a temporary position that will be paid on a time card basis. So $5,000 is the maximum that we anticipate to spend. It could be less than that. So it's a one-time temporary staffing increase that we're utilizing COVID dollars for.
Do you have any questions?
Excuse me, Director Olstad? Tammy, if you would, I know I had asked you this on the side, but I think it bears repeating where this is from COVID funding and why this particular position is being funded through COVID funding and why that makes sense, just for transparency's sake.
Sure, thank you. The COVID dollars were intended to help with learning loss for all of our students during the COVID period. We still have another little over a year to use some of those funds. And the MCA test is a test to measure the, assessing their learning loss or kind of their deficiencies in their, in their learning. So it just made sense that this temporary position, that's just get through these MCAs, would follow the requirements of the COVID dollars.
Thank you, just in case people didn't see the connection there. So, thank you.
Thanks.
Are there any other questions? Okay, all in favor? Aye. Against? That passes 5-0. I got to start actually voting on these myself in a louder voice. And then the next one is the Kids Company Assistant Settlement Approval. I'd like to take a motion and a second for this, and then we'll discuss.
So made.
Second.
Okay, so that was so made by Director Olstad and second by Director Velazquez. Right, and Director Herman, do you have any comments?
Yes, thank you, members of the board. We're bringing forward the settlement for the kids co-assistance. As we have shared with you on a couple of different occasions, we've had a couple of different salary schedules in some of our contracts that just didn't, didn't align to the current recruiting that we needed and didn't make sense in our structures as we move forward. So in order to make those adjustments and looking at the market, we did an adjustment to the base salary and then added 1% to that. For year two, we're only able to add a 0.25%. But with these steps and the incremental growth that they'll be able to see, this was, this was a great option for them because they're going to be able to see that growth throughout their tenure with us, whereas before, previously, they were stuck at a step for a very long time. Additionally, another thing that we're working through is we have a lot of our contracts that require rollover vacation to be used by September. Operationally, that just doesn't make sense. That's when we're trying to start the new school year. It's not when we really can have a lot of people taking all their time off. So we're moving that to December 31st to provide more flexibility on when they operationally can use that rollover. And then there's just several formatting language changes to update it for the new, the new two-year cycle. That compounded percentage increase over the base year was 8.213, which is $103,642. The student kids co-meers the same contract. We just have a different rate for them. So we mirrored the rate increase, adjusted the base schedule plus 1%, and then increased in the year two at a 0.25%.
Are there any questions? I personally want to thank you and Tammy Frederiksen, Director Frederiksen, for all the hard work that you do on the contracts. The speed at which we've gone through and the feedback has been tremendous. So thank you.
Thank you.
So I'm going to take a vote on this, all in favor? Aye. Against? That passes 5-0. And then I'm passing it back to Directory Herman again to talk about the additional personnel items, candidates, employment, resignations, and leaves of absences. Do I need to take a motion for this before we discuss, Martha? Okay, so go ahead, Dr. Herman, or Director Herman?
How about that? I just promoted you.
For clarification, would you like me to look at these individually or more like that during the consent, we're looking to approve all at the same time?
I think we'd be looking to approve all at the same time. I just didn't know if you had any comments to make about the list here. If there's none, then.
Nope, there are no additional comments to make. Bringing forward the personal items as standard at a board meeting. So no additional comments.
Okay, so do we need, we vote on this? I'm not sure, it's just. Okay, so, okay, so take a motion.
So made.
Second, anybody?
Second.
And all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Against? That passes 5-0. And with that, I'd like to take a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So made.
Okay, by Atkinson and seconded by Bullion, and we are adjourned. There we go.